Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
It's over here.
Oh, there it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Were there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move forward. We have no scheduled visitors, but would this be an appropriate time to ask John to say a few words? That would be a great time for you.
Hello. My name's John Strout, and I'm a resident here for Virgens, and I serve on the Addison Northwest School Board. Welcome. There's some new faces. Welcome. Congratulations. My colleagues Keith Morrell are here, and Sue Rukowski, the current board chair of the Addison Northwest School District for only a few more days.
Now that you're counting.
True.
No one's counting now.
Epic, incredible public service by Sue Rukowski. Please, please. I'm going to say it again at town meeting today, okay? But it bears repeating. So I'd like to -- we had our annual meeting last night. I'd like to just make a few of kind of a short recap of some of the information there. There's tons of information for all of us to go and learn more about this budget. You can find RETN. You can find a video of last night's presentation. You can find the actual PowerPoint of the presentation that we gave last night. You can find the annual report. And there's just tons of information to learn about what this budget is about. So I'm just going to give you a few big-picture items here. Number one, it is a 1.3% decrease in the overall budget. It is a decrease in the budget. The Hannaford Career Center, however, all of this is in lieu of a number of important budget drivers that are very difficult for us. Number one is the Hannaford Career Center has increased their tuition by 23%, which is a big, big bump for all of us. Healthcare for employees has increased by about 14%, which is a huge increase. We, of course, have anticipated salary and wage increases. So it was just a gigantic lift to be able to get to a decreased budget. We do not know of a single other school district that has proposed a decreased budget. And on average, we know that the school budgets are generally increasing around the 4% range. We are and have proposed a big change in the district. We are going to move Addison students into Virgens Union Elementary, which will reduce expenditures, and it's going to preserve more opportunities for our kids, for all of our kids. And we are going to create an alternative education in which we were housing and educating our students off-site at CSAC and Middlebury and other places. And the state is simply not going to reimburse us for that in the future, and we've made that change for it now. We intend to partner with our colleagues in Bristol and in Middlebury. So on the overall, for the last three years, including this budget, we've had about a 1% increase over three years. And we anticipate that the tax rate will go up by -- well, still, with that decrease of 1.3%, we still, given declining enrollment, expect an increase in our taxes by about four cents. So that's the overall. My colleagues, anything you'd like to add?
Just that we have not reduced programming at all to achieve that budget. That's very dear to the board's current vision and plan.
Yeah, I would just say, as I think I say pretty much every year, that all those numbers are still estimates. We still await the final numbers from the state for the threshold, the yield, the pupil numbers. So the four cents, five cents increase, that's what we know of today.
So, you know, I supported this budget. I won't speak for them about this. I supported this budget because of all of these possibilities. And this has been a really difficult year, and I know you all know this really well, that this is the best possible budget for kids, and this is the best possible budget for taxpayers. And that's where we always have to find a balance of. So I encourage you to tell others about it, show up to vote, encourage your neighbors and friends to vote. And we'll take any questions now, but we don't want to take up much of your meaning. But please send them to us, and we will be glad to take on any questions that anybody has. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Moving on to the minutes in the warrant, did anyone have any question on the warrants that were circulated?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming.
Have they been circulated?
They have. They're over there. Sorry. We beat you. We'll get it back to you. Let's actually move on to the minutes, and we'll take them individually since they're both rather lengthy. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the regular February 11th meeting? Is there a second? Did anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions? Neither did I. All those in favor of approving as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Moving on to moving on to the lengthy minutes of our 30-minute emergency city council meeting on February 13th.
I didn't stay in that one because I wasn't in attendance.
Great. Moving on to the emergency meeting of February 13th. Is there a motion? And seconded. Any corrections, additions, or deletions?
This is more of a transcript than anything else. But it's got stuff.
Yep. All right. I didn't have any either. All those in favor of approval as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I won't stay if I wasn't here.
And so will I.
Very well. Yes, you may.
You can vote on the minutes when you were here or not.
I'd still rather not since I wasn't there.
Thank you, Peter. Moving on, are there any citizen comments out there that are not on the agenda? Yes, Tim?
I'm going to put my rec coordinator in here. And anyway, this mixes up. There may be differences. More faces changed. I just really wanted to thank you for your support for getting this recreation department started and going in the emergency meeting. You guys just put in the minutes, too. I thought was a really great show of how committed everybody is to making this happen in our city. And I just wanted to thank everybody here before the mix-up happens on town meeting day. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for all your hard work. Any other comments from the audience? All right. Hearing none, we're going to move right into business. And item A is to adopt a resolution to establish uniform zoning fees for the city of Virgens. At six.
Yeah, you have to do that at six.
Yeah, so I created a resolution for the schedule that Peter and I put together. Mostly Peter, our zoning administrator. I put it together in a resolution format here. And Peter projects, there's some notes that I found in your packet, that this will bring us $11,000 more in revenue for the next year by changing the fee schedules to this structure here. So there's, in addition to, you know, revamp the fees, he added some fees and some language that's more consistent with what happens today in the zoning permit world. So Peter, do you want to add anything?
Do you want me to just run through this or just answer questions, whatever?
Does anyone have any question?
I guess the one thing I'll ask you is just with regards to the added revenue. What do we expect the administrative lift to process, the new fee structure? Do we see it being a different, like more of a lifter? Is it pretty administratively? In the office, would it be pretty much the same process?
It's the same. Instead of getting a check for $100, I'm going to check for $150.
I like that.
Processing it stays the same.
Processing it's pretty good.
Yeah. And after, if this is adopted, Peter and I will work together to revamp the application to be consistent with these new fees.
So it's more of a one-time administrative task, and then once we do that, it's
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's not simple.
So where did you get the numbers for this? Because doing the comparative fees with area towns, we seem a little bit higher than most everywhere.
I looked at the comparative fees. I mean, the driver to this all was to do as much as possible to make zoning revenue-neutral. Now we're spending, whatever it is, some $25,000 straight out of the budget. So the efforts weren't necessarily 100% to match other towns. I put that information in there just to kind of give you a sense that I think that we're higher than some, we're lower than others. And I think that's basically it. And then I did, there's another section in there where you see I did some comparison of what a person would pay today versus what they'll pay tomorrow to get a sense of what the increases were. And some of them seem hefty, but I mean, from my perspective, if you're building a new house and you're getting a mortgage, putting $200 more into the total cost of that is like, doesn't even show hardly. So that was kind of the The one thing that we left off this that you and I talked about was the possibility of exempting the city from having to pay fees. Because now the city has to pay the same fees as anybody else. So it's in one hand, you know, out of one pocket into another pocket, and it's all the same. And I don't know whether we want to entertain that or not. That's kind of your call.
Yeah. Yeah. We should, but that section should be on there. We can pass this resolution with
We can pass it without amendment.
With that amendment, yeah.
I understand what the pros, why you're doing this, to try and reduce that deficit. I'm a little concerned about the residential fee increases and the percent they are just because I think it may make us less competitive. The one thing we need are more people living here and more kids in our school. And I, you know, a couple hundred bucks may or may not break the bank, but I just don't think that we want to get a reputation as being anti-competitive with other communities that want residential uses to come in. So, I mean, particularly just the one family, multiple-family increases. I mean, we're going to be twice what Middlebury is. And they haven't reviewed theirs in a number of years, and they probably are going ready. So who knows where that's going to be?
That's going to be my question.
Yeah. Multiple-family is closer. But I just think that we need to consider that. And then in terms of the subdivision, like the DRB subdivision rules, you know, there's a value, a cost up to three, and then three or more, and then, you know, a per parcel fee above that. I almost think you should just save $125 per lot, regardless of number. And that way, it's consistent all the way up, whether it's one lot or whether it's 30 lots. And it's probably going to, you know, get you the same or more money. It just makes it simpler.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I was going to ask whether our comparables, how long has it been since they looked at their fees? Is this going to sort of jumpstart?
It says on the bottom somewhere, the next page. Yeah. Middlebury is pretty old.
Yeah, okay. Bristol's fairly new, but, you know. So it's likely, especially if we do it, they're going to take a look at theirs and say, oh, you know what? So we might not be that far
Right.
behind.
But this can be changed pretty easily. It's not like it's the charter.
Right.
No, we would just adopt a new resolution to amend whatever we want to amend.
Well, we currently have no motion to accept this resolution. So do we have one? Or would we prefer to come back?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made.
A second.
And seconded. Is there any further discussion about amending this motion other than to reflect the city?
Yeah, that the city shall not be subject to this fee structure.
Does that really matter one way or the other? If you're just moving money from one side of the budget to another, then whether we do it or not doesn't change anything, does it? Financially?
Well, it will just show it will just show our expenses and our revenues are higher when in reality, nothing happened.
Right. All right. Any further discussion?
Well, I agree with Bill. I think it should be a set fee per lot. I think that's a, if we're going to amend it, I think that would be one of the amendments that we should do. It seems a lot more reasonable to do it that way.
Peter, do you know where you got that subdivision fee structure from?
Is it like that in the current fee schedule? It's, that's the way it is. And the, I think the only minor Sorry, I didn't put that in there. The, oh, yeah, yeah. Minor subdivision is currently $200 straight on. This would increase it to $250. The major subdivision is $300 plus $100 per lot. And the proposal is to go $400 plus $125 per lot. I don't, we haven't done very many subdivisions since I've been around. So I'm not sure that makes an awful lot of difference in terms of the income issues here.
Yeah, there probably won't be any until the economic corridor. So at least there won't be any danger. There's no NEMREC.
I'm oversimplifying it if we want to make an amendment.
I would agree, too. I think that makes sense.
It's just the way that's now been kind of a break. Because you have three for $250.
I think it makes more sense per lot.
Well, I've heard three nods and approval of that. So we could amend your motion?
Fine with me.
Oh, it's still seconded?
It's still seconded. So we are freeing the city from having to charge fees, and we are changing the subdivision fee to $125 per lot.
So you're just removing 400 plus and leaving the rest?
Removing minor subdivision fee and major subdivision fee. And changing additional permit fees to to lot fees.
Correct.
It's right here. It's on this paper for that.
Is there any further discussion?
Peter, one question. Things like the new housing project out on Armory Lane, how are those fees calculated? Because that's, is that a multi-family?
That's a multi-family dwelling.
Is it only 400, is it by unit there? Or is it 700, 600 bucks?
No, that's not a subdivision.
No, so
So it's
I'm wondering, I mean, is that getting a huge break by the developers there or not?
No, I don't believe so. Not the way we're doing it now.
Do we need to look at those fees as well?
Well, that would be a different fee for a multi-family. I'm trying to think where multi-family is in this.
Well, it says three units, 4,000 feet, but that's it.
Right, but that's a subdivision.
No, it's comparative fees in the year. I'm looking at comparative fees is what I'm looking at.
In the next page.
And I don't, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, should we go back and revisit this and think about it and deal with it again rather than try and since it's not, you know, a life-or-death situation?
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Shall we just table our motion?
Yeah, we could bring it back to the table next month.
Yeah, we could get some answers to some of this. And I may have more questions, too, once I think about it.
We can get together.
Okay, and that's great.
Those are good thoughts. You should, yeah. There's no
Let's do a launch session.
So that means my raise will have to wait for another month.
Sorry, Peter.
All right. Very well. We will table that discussion. Moving on to item B, authorization for the city manager to have access to all NEMREC modules.
Yeah, so NEMREC is a program we use for all our accounting, tax collection, a whole host of things. But it's our main program we use. When I first started, I tried to get access to some modules. Some of them I, Matchable gave me a login for. There's other modules I didn't have a login for, so I'd call NEMREC support, and they would give me a real hard time because some elected officials have jurisdiction over modules in different municipalities. Here, we don't have many, you know, elected, we don't have an elected clerk or treasurer. You know, so they're hesitant to give me access to certain things because other places have elected officials, whereas I should have access to everything. So basically, I'm just asking for approval and a signed letter by the council that I can send to NEMREC so I have access to all the modules.
Great. We are circulating a document. I don't think you need a motion to carry this forward.
Yeah. That's fine.
Is everyone in agreement with?
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item C, approval of the use of West Main Street fund balance for salt shed grants matching funds.
So there was a fund created, I think the contract's back in like 2000 for when they did a resurfacing project for West Main Street. And this fund was created for, we did the paving, but the state gave us some funds that we put into this fund. And it was all, no?
No. That's all our money in that fund. That was just our contract agreement.
But where'd the money originally come from?
You mean for the project?
Yeah.
Oh, it was a state project. They gave us the money to
Yeah, yeah. So we put this money in the fund that set aside, and it was only to be used for West Main Street maintenance.
Right.
After, for a 15-year period.
Right.
For a 15-year period. So that 15-year period has now passed. We have the fund set aside in this West Main Street fund that we can use. It's unrestricted at this point. So we're looking for authorization to use it for matching, for our matching funds for the salt shed grant project, which is going to be around $50,000. And we've received an invoice from the engineer for about $2,000. So we'd like to start using those funds for the salt shed project.
Wasn't there a small balance that had to be used out of the public works budget? Is that part of that salt shed project as well? Or did I misunderstand when I read the report you had?
How the public works budget? I don't think
No. What it was is we were supposed to end up paying $16,000, and they earmarked $4,000 a year for the next four years.
Yeah, no, we didn't.
So then we just take that money? That's the match for the salt shed?
Yeah, yeah, that's not true.
Okay, that's not true. That's fine.
All right. Do I actually have a motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very well. And I think we'll have time to take care of item D, approve the reallocation of general fund recreation expenditures to the watershed fund.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we had the emergency call meeting, and we discussed reallocating funds from the general fund that were used for recreation expenses to the watershed fund for the rec coordinator for the remainder of the fiscal year. So this is just authorizing me to and I itemized exactly what would be moved. It's in your packets.
Great. Thank you. We do have a motion?
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Who made the motion?
Deputy Mayor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
That was a great way to solve a difficult problem?
Yeah, thank you.
So we are six minutes away from our public hearing. I'm wondering, should we recess the meeting now before we engage in further discussion? All right. It's 5:55. We will recess the meeting.
I don't know.
I know.
It could be a long discussion or a short discussion, so we'll just wait for five minutes.
Do you have a long, may I report?
It might be a bit.
Call this public hearing to order. It's 6:00 PM. Yeah, she's excited.
Yeah, she's not going to leave Danell alone.
I'd like to read this notice of the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Virgens City Council will hold public hearings on Tuesday, February 25, 2020, at 6:00 PM, and Tuesday, March 10, 2020, at 6:00 PM at the Virgens Fire Station, 50 Green Street, for the following purpose. Pursuant to 24 VSA Section 4385, the city council proposes to amend Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of the municipal development plan, the land use map, and the appendices of the municipal development plan. A copy of the plan is available for public review in the city clerk's office, on the city's website at virgens.org, or by contacting Peter Garen, zoning administrator at pegaren@virgens.org. Shannon, would you like to give us a brief overview?
Yeah, so, for about the last year and a half, two years, the planning commission has been working on the plan update. Um, the current plan has actually expired. It expired in, at the end of September, but we're okay. Um, part of the changes that have taken place in this, actually, I'll, I'll go back. We had a, uh, leading up to this, uh, there was a public planning forum in September of 2018 that actually had about 50 or 70 people attending, which was really great. Um, and we, we had a good deal of public input for that. Um, the planning commission had a public hearing at the beginning of January as well, um, and so then now you're gonna have your two public hearings. The major changes that we're looking at in this plan, um, going through those, those chapters, we've updated a lot of our demographic information as required by the state. Um, we've looked at acknowledgement in our transportation section about the proposed Virgin's economic corridor, so that is in our plan. Um, we've looked at, um, eliminating our agricultural and resident, rural residential district and co-opting that into our low-density residential district. Um, the net effect for that is that we're gonna allow more things to go on in those areas, but not penalize anybody who is already doing agricultural things. Um, we're looking at expanding the high-density residential district. We're looking at expanding the limited, the resident, residential and limited business district, which is along Main Street. Um, in the appendices, there is an enhanced energy plan, which, if adopted, will give the city, um, greater leverage. There will, will have substantive deference in any public utility commission hearings, um, for any energy concerns going on within the city. Um, so, that's a good thing. Uh, that's something fairly recent that the state has allowed people to do, and we're one of a handful in Addison County that is at this point, um, for this. Um, so, in a nutshell, that's what's going on. Um, what this also does is lays the foundations for us to update our regulations. One of the things that we're trying to do this year is, um, apply successfully for another state designation, the neighborhood development area designation, which, uh, you may remember, we, we looked at a couple of years ago, but because of constraints within our zoning regulations in, in terms of dimensional standards, our application was dead in the water. Um, this will allow us to get to that point to be successful for that. Um, and with that, if anybody has any questions, we have a lot of members of the planning commission here, um, so, we'd be able to field anything that anybody has.
Does anyone have any questions for Shannon or his party?
Think you did a great job myself.
Yes, thank you very much.
Getting pretty good at it.
Well, we've, we've done it a few times. There, there are some non-substantive changes that we need to make, some errors that we've found, but, uh, we'll take care of that at the end.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any other comment they'd like to make? All right.
Way too easy.
Yeah. Hearing, no further discussion. We will adjourn this hearing at 6:05 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we will.
They're saying there's gonna be another one on the 10th.
On the 10th, yes.
So, if we needed to redo.
Yeah. So, it seems like the 10th is the great, a great time for us to have a meeting, and then you can call in. Be, no, fine, be all fine. All right, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting at 6:05 PM, and we are at, we're in business. We're up to item E, which is a discussion regarding the Northland's Job Corps payment in lieu of taxes. Alderman Austin.
So, um, for the benefit of everyone who may not know the history relative to Job Corps, when the, um, when the Department of Labor approached the city of Virgin's, there were some agreements made relative to financial remuneration related to that facility and its impacts on the city of Virgin's. Um, that continued on for a number of years. Um, at some point, Joan, you can remember the exact year they stopped paying us?
Rainbow Friday was here.
Yeah, so, at, at some point, at some point in the early 2000s, um, they discontinued those payments. And, um, and, and there'd been some back and forth, and, and there was, uh, the, the crux of it was that the Department of Labor essentially refused to sign any contract wherein the contractor that operates the facility would pay the municipality. Um, and, and so, that, that put us in a, a difficult situation. And I, I think, based on, um, based on a number of different things, it's time to revisit that conversation. We spend, um, a significant amount of time, resources, and money. Um, that entity over there is, is no different than any other entity in the city of Virgin's. Um, if it were, uh, if we were spending the same relative to dealing with Collins Aerospace, we'd certainly be having a conversation. We've had conversations about other business entities in the city of Virgin's and the impacts they have on the delivery of municipal services and the cost to the city. I think at this point, um, we, we need to take some action, um, based on a number of things. We had an incident last weekend where, uh, an officer was injured as a result of, uh, an investigation there. Um, Chief's Department in particular bears the brunt of this. Um, and it's, uh, it's, it's not the fault of the kids there. It's not the fault of the facility. I think it comes with a territory. And I, I guess, at this point, what I'd like to say is, I think that, um, regardless of the DOL, and regardless of the position of the contractor, they're, they're, they're not doing charity work over there, okay? The contractor's making a significant profit operating that facility for the Department of Labor. Um, and, and I find it completely unreasonable and outrageous that a city of 2,800 people, that's a relatively economically diverse community, should bear that burden. That facility serves greater New England. And, and why should this community here bear that burden? It, it was understood at the time that we agreed to host the facility, that, that's why these payments occurred. And, and so, I, I think we're at a point where we need to revisit that conversation. Um, and if we run up against a brick wall relative to the DOL, which I'm told we may, I think we have to seriously start looking at some other options. What are those other options? There's other uses for that facility. That property in those buildings is owned by the state of Vermont. The state of Vermont leases that facility to the Department of Labor, who in turn awards a contract. Um, so, what do we do? If they're not gonna pay us, I think that, uh, the next step is to have some serious discussions, folks in Montpelier, relative to our concerns, and, and what it means and how it's impacting the city and our bottom line. Specifically, the fact that there's a number of people in the city of Virgin's that have approached me that are concerned relative to our tax rate. Are my taxes going to go up? Are you gonna be able to get my taxes down? You know, we, we have a responsibility to adequately fund the functioning of the city, and we have a, a responsibility to keep residents safe, and I think we're doing some great things, moving things forward. Um, we can't allow this, this situation to continue. So, um, what, what I'd like to see is us to have some level of consensus to move forward and have a discussion about what those steps are and what they look like, and whether we appoint a committee, or there's a group involving folks from the council, community members, whoever it is. I, I think the time is now to address this, rather than to just say, throw up our hands, nothing we can do about it. I mean, if anybody has any questions, I mean, Chief could talk at length. I mean, we spend, you know, an, an incident there, um, you know, it depends on the situation. It can be two hours, it can be 10 hours, it can be more than that. And so, when you start to do the math, it adds up, and it adds up very, very quickly. And, and that's just relative to the police department. It doesn't, it doesn't count any of the other things that we do relative to that facility. And, and I, I just think that it's entirely unreasonable that commitments were made and agreements were made, and they've been broken. And so, if there's nothing we can do about it, we'd better start finding some other options.
Maybe Matt and Diane could be invited to the next meeting and put that as a priority before they get out of session.
Absolutely.
Um, Chief.
Yes, sir.
You know that facility better than any of us, and of course, year to year, it's gonna change in terms of the, the commitment or the cost to the city, but do you, have you ever tried to put together a cost estimate on an annualized basis? Because I think that that's the first piece of information we really need to have to decide how to approach this question. You know, is it, is it $20,000? Is it $50,000? Is it $100,000? I know that we, we're getting money, we were getting $40,000 a year, if I recall, when we were, and that was 15 or 20 years ago.
How much?
I think it was more than that.
Forty?
A hundred.
Yeah.
Was it a hundred?
Hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
And each year it went up. It had a need, it used to be like 70, 80, 90. We were up to 100 when they asked for another increase.
Okay.
And that's when they stopped paying.
And there was never an agreement, there was never a sunset in the agreement of when those payments would stop?
There was nothing in writing.
DOL just stopped.
Yeah, DOL just stopped.
Because it was basically, the government was paying the government, which is not legal.
And, and I, and I think that the important thing for people to understand here is, is that those payments came out of the contractor.
Yeah.
That's where those payments came from. So, it wasn't a situation where it was costing the DOL anything, essentially. They might argue that point, but you could go back and you could look at the contracts, and it was coming out of the contractor. So, you know, here we have a situation where we have an entity that's making significant profit at our expense.
So, Bill, I, I did a recap of the past five years, and the total number of calls just from our records management system, just at our 100 McDonough Drive, we responded to 234 calls over a five-year period of time. Now, those calls are broke, there's a number of different types of calls, and you really can't put a dollar amount or a time amount.
Right, yeah.
Depending on the call. You may go to a call, and it may require 30 minutes of your time. Uh, but if you respond to a call, a more serious call, like a, an assault or something to that effect, or something more serious, you could be up to, and this is just for one officer, you could be talking 20, 30, 40 hours. And then, of course, if you have to call officers in to, to help do the investigation and do follow-up, uh, you're talking a significant amount of overtime. There have been some calls that required our detective to work 20, 30, maybe even 40 hours, uh, to include, uh, court time, depositions, hearings, and whatever else. So, it gets pretty expensive. Um, and there's the majority of these calls, I said majority, quite a few of these calls, um, require amount, quite a amount of time and a lot of follow-up. So, I could, I could go through and call, pull these calls up, and I could give you a pretty good estimate about what these calls, the major calls cost, but, um, I just have the numbers right now.
That's a good start, at least, yeah.
Yeah, we're not talking about what the fire department would say over there, too.
Exactly. But it's a collective effort, and, and you, you may have a, an assault case that could cost just one officer's, just on the strictly amount of time that he spends, it could cost, you know, four, five, $6,000.
I think, well, we, we also need to just be a little careful about costs, because obviously, you know, like on the other side, you'll say economic impact, people coming to the facility, jobs created. So, I think we do, I, I definitely agree in principle with a lot that you brought forward. I do wanna make sure we're not going in pure dollars and cents, and we're talking a lot about the impact on the community in the time, because, you know, the other side could, you could, you know, make an economic argument as well. Um, I think that we have a good economic argument of, there's a lot of land up there that could be taxable, you know, land on the grant list. So, I think that there's, I just wanna make sure we're being a little careful about assigning a, a dollar number to, to Chief's, um, you know, Chief's Department and Fire Department. Should be careful there.
Understood. I, I, I'd agree. I think that the other piece of it is, is that when you look at that facility, um, you know, the flip side of that is what's the highest and best use, you know? And I think that, um, you know, the last time that we got to this point, um, was more towards some issue, some public safety issues that were occurring over there. And so, at that point, um, you know, the discussions with Montpelier were, uh, well, we'll close it down, we'll put nothing there, we'll open a, a jail, so on and so forth. I have no tolerance for that attitude coming out of Montpelier.
Um, just as a, kind of a remark to back to, to your idea is, I think there is, uh, there is a number of what that police call cost, whatever. Doesn't mean it has to equate to them paying for that, you know what I mean? So, if we're spending 234 trips over there, and they're costing, you know, let's say, $1,000 a trip, you know, I know, I don't, it's just a number, then we could say, this is how much, you know, this is really what is costing us, and we're only asking you for this in lieu of that. I think there's ways to negotiate that.
But it could also, I mean, just playing devil's advocate, it also could back us into a position that we are actually undervaluing, you know, what that, what that facility, it, it means to the community. If it's $100,000 a year, and, and we're just saying, oh, we'll take a $200,000 check, like, then we've lost that under, that recurring revenue. So, I think, I just wanna be careful about.
Yeah.
A straight dollar, and it's more about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Of the larger vision of what that facility, what that land is, how it can impact our community.
If you go to look at their annual payroll and the number of people there.
Right.
How many live in this area, and which money they spend, and so on. I mean, there's, there's, there's not gonna be a, a black and white answer.
No. Shannon?
In terms of alternate uses, uh, there was actually a study, uh, in the last five years or so, uh, that really details a lot of that, and, uh, Building and General Services were part of the steering committee for that. Um, so, there, there, there's some foundational stuff, aside from just saying, let's put a jail there. Um, and I can get you guys links to that if you need or want.
So, I, I think probably the best way to proceed, if everyone agrees, is we should, because we could spend hours talking about what to do, is we need to get certainly at least Matt and Diane involved in this discussion, and, um, we can bring it up again at a future meeting.
I, I think that we should also invite, um, a couple of folks in the governor's cabinet as well, because ultimately, that's where the decision will be made.
Sure, I agree. So, why don't you and Manager Hoffman coordinate putting that together?
We'll do.
Does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Great. Anyone else have any comments to make?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Um, I think I notified you guys today that there's a public relations person finally employed for the resurfacing project, which is exciting. Um, and, um, I think I gave you guys her contact information. Feel free to reach out to her. She's gonna make her information available to the public at large, but she's, like, I think was just hired a couple days ago, so she's still getting acclimated herself. She did tell me today that there will be no milling or, or any construction being, being performed on South, between South Water Street and Moncton Road before Memorial Day. So, we know that for sure. So, that's why, so, a- as, as I work with her, I'm learning, and I will, um, every meeting, or, um, you know, and emails, let, let you guys know updates as they come. Um, that being said, we have a pre-construction meeting on Monday morning at 9:00 AM. Um, and I, I asked you, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to, I'm, but you have an obligation, and I asked the deputy mayor, and she's gonna come with me. Um, but, a- any of you guys are welcome to come to this pre-construction meeting if you'd like. Um, I can give you the information. I think it's Cochran, I think.
It's in Colchester.
It's in Colchester.
Colchester.
Colchester, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, just touch base with me if you wanna come to the pre-construction meeting on Monday. It's gonna be some, like a kickoff meeting, um, let me know, and, and we can go to that. Um, we're looking into digitizing all our land records and working with the company, um, so we can have a, not, not only digitize our old records, but, you know, have a system going forward where we can scan stuff in, have it maybe even available to the public in a web browsing type program. Um, so, we're looking, Morgan and I are looking into that. Um, we got, uh, we, we amended, we, we have the state revolving loan that we've been using to do the preliminary engineer report on the wastewater system and the stormwater situation. Um, part of that loan, we amended to include a camera that we can actually scope out sewer lines with, and that amendment got accepted. So, um, in a, with the smoke testing supplies that we will be getting from the loan, we'll be getting a camera as well. Um, and so, so hopefully, in the summer, we'll be able to really pinpoint what's going on.
If I recall, that camera to, I remember we talked about contracting or someone to do that, and it was an extremely large price tag, and instead, we're gonna purchase the camera ourselves, is that right?
Right.
Right, great.
I don't know what that price tag was, but this camera's $30,000.
Uh, but I think the, the hourly rate of the contractor was.
Hundreds of thousands.
Was significant.
Yeah.
Undertaking was huge, so I think it's gonna save a lot of money.
Yeah, so, we're gonna get a cam, and, and, you know, it's a loan, but as this project progresses, you know, and as we find funding sources for this enormous overall $16 million infrastructure project, part of that loan may be forgiven or incorporated into this big project. So, um, those things are still being worked out, but we will be getting a camera. Um, I, I had a question, uh, for you guys about the finance reports. I, I touched base with Deputy Mayor Donnelly, um, about finance reports. Do you guys, in my, in my mind, the finance reports should be done at the end of a period or the end of a month. And so, it works when I give you guys the finance reports at the first meeting. The, the, the second meeting of the month, um, the finance reports, it's like, kinda like in between the month, so it's not really, like, you can't calculate a percentage of the year. You know, it, it's not really apples to apples. So, I'd prefer to give a finance report at the, the first meeting, and, um.
That goes through the prior month?
Yeah, so, so let's say, so let's say, you know, the February 11th meeting, um, I gave you guys a finance report. That was through the end of January. So, like, for, for instance, if I were to do a finance report today, well, would that, that would be through, you know, today. It's kinda, it's kind of like, it's an odd, it's an odd date in the accounting world, anyway. So, if it's okay, I'll, uh, i- if you guys wanna look at something specific in between, um, by all means, come to me, and I can, I can generate a finance report anytime. Uh, and, um, I did today, uh, but, you know, just, yeah, if that's okay, I'll, I'll just do one at the first meeting.
And we would, and if there was, there was an aberration of some sort, you could just bring it to our attention.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And we, you know, we have to, we're gonna rely on you for that, anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll go through, and I'll. Yeah, yeah, and I'll go through, and I'll analyze and put notes, and I'm still, I'm still fine, fine tuning my finance report and making it, making it nice and readable for you guys. And that being said, I've been working on the budget with our department heads, and just myself organizing the budget and interpreting the budget, and seeing what long-term liabilities we have and what assets we're paying off, and putting those things in the budget, and I've been giving budget request sheets to our department heads for them to fill out and get back to me, so I'm already in the midst of getting the budget together, and in doing so, as I, as I look at our long-term liabilities, our loans that we have on our assets, and, you know, keeping an inventory of our assets for the Gatsby 34, and, you know, those types of things, so I'm keeping a list on the side for myself as I go and analyze the budget. So, that being said, hopefully, within the next month or so, me and the department heads work out, you know, really what they want, and I can put together a budget for workshops in early April, hopefully, so that's, that's going to come up on the horizon. And lastly, I'm interviewing for the admin assistant position right now, I'm interviewing for part-time, and I have an interview set up for tomorrow, I had one yesterday, so that's, stay tuned on that, too, I'm working on that as well.
Great.
Any questions?
No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll try to be as brief as I can, all right. First thing I want to say is, this is the final regular city council meeting of this council. Alderman Small will be leaving us, so thank you very much, Dave, for your service. And of course, our treasured city clerk treasurer, Joan Devine, is here for her last regular city council meeting with us. Thank you, Joan. And I would like to read a proclamation. City of Virgens mayoral proclamation, whereas Joan Devine has been employed by the city of Virgens since July 1st, 1978, and whereas Joan Devine has served as city clerk for 38 of those years, establishing her as the longest-serving municipal clerk in Addison County, Vermont, and whereas, on February 28th, 2020, Joan Devine will retire from her post as city clerk treasurer, and whereas the city of Virgens recognizes Joan Devine's many years of faithful, professional, and dedicated service in municipal government, and her unyielding commitment to the city of Virgens, and whereas the mayor and city council wish to extend their gratitude for her many years of dedication to the city of Virgens. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Fritz, mayor of Virgens, do hereby proclaim Friday, February 28th, 2020, Joan Devine Day. I urge all the citizens of Virgens to express their thanks in person at Virgen City Hall on February 28th, and witness whereof I do hereby set my hand this 25th day of February It's official.
Do we have the throne that we can put in the office?
Crown.
And, and we do have a little something for you, it's very little, and we can talk about it a little later, but this is something that we all wanted you to have.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Would you like me to help you open it? Because I think you should look at it.
You're scaring me.
There's a posse there.
Oh, very nice. That picture is behind my desk. It was donated to the city by Richard Austin Jr., and I had it matted and framed, and it came up missing when we painted City Hall, and it was missing for about three to four months, and then Matt Chabot located it somewhere, and it's back behind my desk. I love that photo, thank you so much.
I tried to get it framed, but we have a devil of a time, so we'll talk about that later.
Thank you very much. There's a story in that.
Thank you, Joan, I, I will miss you.
Thank you.
We all miss you.
All right, does anyone have anything they'd like to say to Joan before we dismiss In that event, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Don't forget to come out and vote.
Meeting adjourned, yes, oh, yes, and don't forget, the annual city meeting Monday evening at 7:30, and voting the next day, please.